We are going to call the meeting to order. Can you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. All right. We're starting with a presentation with our portfolio with Haley Cabarello. Thank you.
Hi Haley.
Hi. My name is Haley Cabarello. I am now a senior at Eden Junior Senior High School, looking to pursue a career in the medical illustration field. I have an art portfolio with me tonight and a statement. Could I bring up for you to see? Okay. Oh, my gosh. Those are stunning. That is beautiful. Wow. This was a piece that I did at pre-college over the summer.
You drew that?
Yeah, this was on Adobe Illustrator Photoshop. It was an assignment that I had to do. We had to do a self-portrait and then, yeah. And then we had to put muscles under the skin. All right. And then these were ones from a couple of years ago. I just wanted to add it to the portfolio. Kind of shows how I grow, but.
That's amazing.
All right. Just to make it go faster. These two I did on, at a street chalk competition at Lockport.
Wow.
Yeah. They're the size of a parking spot.
How much chalk did you use? Just out of curiosity.
A lot. Yeah, you can show those. Yeah. These ones I did at, are you sure? All right. These ones I did at pre-college as well. This was a Still Life. We had a man in front of us and we had to draw him. We had a few minutes to draw him, so. It's like regular college, but you have two, it's like for pre-students that aren't in college yet. So it's kind of like getting used to what a college experience is like. This was at Cleveland, Cleveland Institute of Art. Um, I'm not sure yet. I am looking more towards RIT. Yeah. Go ahead. This is me and my brother. Yeah. I've always done art. Yeah, my dad was an artist too. He went to art school in Buffalo.
So Haley, what is that butterfly one? Are those little pictures that you drew or what is that?
Um, these are all the memories of, from my high school. And it's kind of like the last high school experience. So I kind of put a collage together and made into a butterfly because butterflies symbolize like life and.
This year, it says 2019 on it.
Yeah, I did that this year.
Oh, look at that.
This one I did on Procreate, which is on my iPad. It's just an app. I used the Apple pencil. I was looking at a jar with a pig inside it actually. And I just kind of.
So you were looking at something while you were, obviously.
Yeah. And then I kind of made it my own at the same time. Yeah, you're doing great. There's one more. Yeah. This one was also on Procreate. A photographer allowed me to use his photo to draw. Yeah, I like to do realistic drawings. Thank you. All right. Yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much. Those are beautiful. Yeah, Haley, you're going to talk for a minute, right?
I have a statement to say real quick.
Okay.
Can we have your autograph before you get famous?
As some of you may know, I have had an interest in art my whole life. Last year I became, I came across the medical illustration field, which is perfect because I prefer to draw realistically. In November of 2019, I attended Portfolio Day at RIT, where I had my portfolio reviewed by several schools. Three schools accepted my portfolio that day. In December, I was fully accepted by four schools and with that I received scholarships. However, I get, to get to this point, it was very difficult. When it came, when it came time to choose art classes for my senior year, there were none available. The only classes available were ones that I had already taken. One I even took twice. I hope that by me being here tonight and showing you what I have accomplished shows how important art classes are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Mrs. Cole will be speaking about the girls swim team.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak today. I was supposed to be here last month, but with Christmas and the holidays, it just wasn't going to work. So thank you for allowing me to come a little late. My PowerPoint today is just to kind of recap our season for the girls varsity. As I said, my name is Shawna. This is my third year, my third season as the head coach, and I'm also high school special ed teacher. So to say that we had a really good season is an understatement. This year, we ended our season with seven wins and one loss to Cheryl's alma mater, East Aurora. Just can't seem to close that gap, but it's okay. The highlight though of the year, I think the biggest, the most exciting thing for the girls was the fact that we beat our rival Springville this year. And that's always been a team that since I was on the team 20 some years ago, we've always been back and forth. And we haven't beat them in the few years that I've been the head coach until this year. So it was very, very exciting for the girls. Our overall record, we had eight wins this year and three losses. But a highlight of that was last year when we scrimmaged against Amherst, they slaughtered us by like 40 or more points. This year, it came down to the last event and they only beat us by one point. So to say that we made the Amherst coach a little nervous, he did a little shuffling in the last event to try to make sure that he beat us and he beat us by one point. Cheryl, did you want to say something about that? He was, yeah. From there, we went on to ECICs. So this is a little out of order on the slideshow. ECICs came before the class meet. ECICs, we took third place out of 14 schools, which is the best that we've done in the past three years. And at the Class C meet, we also took third place. We had a bunch of records that were broken this year. So Elle Necker broke five records this year, and I'll talk about her in a little bit. And you see the events, she broke the 200 free, the 200 IM, the 100 butterfly, 100 back, 100 breaststroke. And those are the times that she hit to break those records. Caroline Coleman, in our last championship meet of the season, her goal the whole season was to break the 500 freestyle record. And she finally got it at the last meet. The, what we used to call the sectional meet, they now call it the state qualifying meet. So that was really exciting. She didn't think she broke it. She kind of went up there like eh, whatever. And she, she was so surprised when she looked at that time. She thought it was somebody else's time. It wasn't her time. And Savannah Kazudas, who is one of our divers, she broke Maryvale's pool record in diving this year. And then, of course, we had Elle Necker, who was our state qualifier. So a little bit about Elle, if you, if you're not familiar, although I'm sure you probably are. She's a phenomenal, phenomenal swimmer, highly motivated, dedicated to her sport, puts in hours upon hours of work, 365 days a year. She's an eighth grader. We went to Ithaca in November for states. And what's unique about her going to states this year is she actually qualified during the season, not at the championship meets, and she qualified in four events, which usually kids are really excited to qualify in just one. So she had that rare opportunity to be able to pick what two events she wanted to qualify for. She chose the butterfly and the breaststroke. So Friday of that week was the prelims. And out of 89 competitors in the 100 butterfly, she took 32. And out of 49 competitors in the 100 breaststroke, she took 31st. So she made it back as an alternate. She didn't get to swim in the finals, but she made it back as an alternate. That being said, she's a middle schooler. And I kind of went through after and did some reflecting. And to put it all into perspective, there were 163 teams that were represented at the state meet. There were hundreds of swimmers that qualified for this meet. Of middle school kids, there were only 13 to 15 of them that I could count that actually qualified for states. And Elle was one of them. So out of hundreds of kids, being within that 13 to 15 to qualify for states, regardless of where she placed as a major accomplishment. But that isn't where her season really is going to be ending. Overall, she's had a very successful season. In section six, she was ranked top five in five individual events. She broke five school records, as I said earlier. She broke pool records at Maryvale and at Springville. She was one of two girls to qualify for states at the state qualifier in two events. And I say qualify in quotes there because she had already qualified. Usually when the kids go to the state qualifier, they're trying to qualify for states. She hit her best times again in two events and was like automatically in states. There were only two girls that did that in our section. At that meet, she was recognized by the Buffalo News. And there's a picture, and I'm not sure if you can see it on, on your end there, but there's a picture of her being interviewed by the Buffalo News. And was actually put, there was a snippet about her in the athlete of the week. Our first week of, of the season, when we started our dual meets in the beginning of September, she was nominated for athlete of the week by the Buffalo News. On October 2nd, she was recognized with the New York State Public High School Athletic Association for this award. It's titled Milk Moves of the Week for breaking, at that time, only two of her five school records. Oh, I did already say the state qualifier being interviewed by the Buffalo News. And then just another piece there. Her family, relatives, teammates, and of course, her coaches, Cheryl being one of my coaches, my assistants as well. We're grateful, we just want to say we're grateful to the community. We're grateful to the board for your ongoing support. Her swim career is not done. She couldn't be here today because she's at swim practice. She swims for twist. And she's actually going to be attending the national meet in Florida. She's a part of the, the club team's elite team that's training for nationals. So she'll be traveling to nationals in the, in the spring. So again, thank you. Thank you for the new record board, your support for that. Thank you to Don for Huddle because my team uses it. We use it for every meet. I have a parent that has access to my account and she records the meets. We bring it back to the classroom after meets and we talk about feedback, positive things, things that we, we see we need to improve on. And also, of course, thank you for your continued support. So I appreciate you listening and taking the time and allow me to be here today.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice job Shawna. So while we're setting up for the next, and Lucinda, thanks for running up, up and down here. Nick Humphrey and Mike McCarthy, Mike from Young and Right and Nick from Campus Construction are going to come and give us all, including the audience, an update as to where we stand in our upcoming capital project proposal. As you know, Campus Construction and Young and Right were our go-tos for the last project that we just completed maybe a month ago. You think so, Lucinda? Maybe a month ago. It's a long process. There's a lot of details when it has to do with the school. And we're excited to bring this one to all of you as well.
All right. Thanks for having us in. As Sandy said, we have begun to take a look at the next project for the district and do some preliminary work and start to see where things are kind of working out.
So do you want me to back up a little?
Sure.
So, so just so that everyone knows, we started this conversation in the summer. We invited at least 40 people to a community forum in October to help us understand what some of their interests, needs and wants were in an upcoming capital project. This is both from the community and also from students and staff within the district. And from that meeting in October, plus also things that we did not get done in our last capital project from our 2015 referendum. This is what Mike and Nick will talk about tonight.
So as Sandy was saying, the document that you see on the screen now is our long-term plan that we work with for the district. So on the, on the left-hand side is all the items from the previous project. So it was a $22.15 million project. Those items are all crossed out because those were completed at that time. In the middle, there's some other various projects that the district works throughout the year to complete. Some was a Safe Act project that was some safety that was done for the school. Smart Schools is based on technology with some equipment, security cameras, laptops, some other things. Below that, Capital Outlay Project. So those are kind of taking care of some of the minor needs to the district. And then maintenance projects, which the, the district works on as well. So on the right-hand side is what we were left with at the end of the last project. And like Sandy was saying, we worked with a group to determine some priorities within those items. So because it's a long list, we want to make sure we get that down into a manageable size for a project. You can see in this slide, there's some items highlighted in yellow. Those are ones that we started to determine would be a priority looking into the next project. Here's some of the information that we got back as we did the meeting with the focus group to see some priorities. And it's not so much important what's on there now, but the bottom numbers in yellow, we had the groups rank one through five. And as things whittled down, we started to move those items to see where people felt things should go. So the closer it was to a one, the more important. And towards a five would be, would be least. This is some of the data that we generated then. So the next slide that's up here is more of what we call a pre-refereendum schedule. That's what we're involved with right now. I'm just going to hit some of the key points of the schedule. Basically, we started as Superintendent Angelo said, in October with the stakeholder groups. We're working on taking that data and developing what we call a scope of work and putting conceptual estimating to those numbers. The key importance of this slide is that basically we're going to work through that process. And then up until about April, we're going to come back to the board with kind of a package to present, to show kind of where we're at with the scope that we've heard and saw from folks. And then ultimately by June, we'll be having the board say yes, we would like to or we'd like not to, to proceed moving forward, which would then ultimately involve the secret process and the legal process to ultimately then determine that a board resolution should be made to go out for a public vote or I E resolution made at a said board meeting. So the next thing quickly, because I know some people say, well, what does this mean as far as an overall timeline? When would we see construction if said vote would pass? So you can see that we're right now in the pre-ref process with an estimated project vote in December of 2020 this year. It's important to note that what we're working towards is a tax-neutral proposition for the voters with a potential of having a separate proposition for a minimal tax impact to be voted on. The next phase after the vote would be the design process and SED review. It's important to note that the way that we're trying to structure this project, it would be in two phases. This is more for the financials to work out for the district. And then ultimately bidding award would start in January of 2022, Phase 1. And then 2023 would be bidding Phase 2. And then ultimately, construction would start if said vote passed in 2022 and then finish in December of 23. So as part of this project, we went through what we did within the last project, the $22 million and change that we spent. And we felt that this school needed some of the beautification aspects that the other schools had gotten. So we wanted to put a focus on the elementary school and one of the main items being the windows and exterior of the building as this, this building is part of the history of the district itself. So we have some before and renderings, potential after photos of one of the items that we've been talking about, which is the masonry on the building as well as the windows. If you've tried to operate the windows here, they're heavy. They, some don't work great, so we want to spruce that up. And also, we want to stick with the historic nature of the building, which we would be required to do per the state. So here's a front of, a front of the building photo as it currently stands. Here's a rendering of what it could look like after with new windows, cleaned up brick. We would stick with a color that the building was originally for the windows as well as you can see the mullions, like the dividers within the windows. We'd want to stick as close to what it was originally as possible. This is the backside of the, the building by the loading dock. This one, I feel, is probably one of the true colors that you can kind of see as it is in direct sunlight, middle of the day. So the new windows would be something we'd look at doing. And once we get into the project further, we determine, you know, how they operate, whether they're awning or double hung windows and, and all of those good things that come along with it. So if you have any questions or any comments or anything we can answer for you.
I guess I would simply add that the last capital project, which we were mostly all involved in, included some needs and wants. This particular capital project includes needs and more needs. The list, the preliminary list that we're looking at is 22, 23, $24 million, whatever it adds up to. But the board feels that that would not be responsible to go out at such a large number. And so the preliminary numbers look like 10 or 12 million zero tax impact project coupled with a, call it a $3 million project with less than half a percent tax increase. And that, as we kind of whittle down the numbers, we feel that that might be a way to balance the needs of the taxpayers along with realizing that this isn't stuff that we can just say, well, we're not going to do it. It's a matter of what we have, it has to be done. It's just going to be done at a later date, perhaps more costly if we kick the can down the road further. So those are the things that along with these teams will be whittling down to see what should be in proposition one that absolutely shouldn't wait, can't wait. And what can we put in proposition two to allow the taxpayers to decide if there's a small increase? Can we do this, these additional items? But again, aren't, aren't particularly flashy. But if we don't do them now, they're just going to be more costly down the road.
I think that those are great statements by Jack. And what I would also challenge all of us to consider is that every few years we need to keep doing this. Because the reason that it was so costly in the last project is because there wasn't a project for a very, very long time. And that especially this building being built in 1939 and signature building of the entire town, we were obligated to keep it up and to make sure that we don't let it fall apart. And you probably see and hear people up on the roof right now. That's because outside of a capital project, we have found some funds to be able to fix what has become a true problem on a slate roof. So I appreciate David's work and Laura's work and the board's work for making sure that we take care of this building and all of them in the district.
I would simply add to that, that if you look at your own house, how long can you ignore known problems? And, and if you continue to ignore a known problem, how much more costly does it become to fix down the road? And this building is, how many years old?
Well, it's going to be. It's going to be 80 years old and we're going to have a birthday party this spring. Was that a lead-in, Jack, cutting?
It was a setup, yeah.
So the candles are going to be PVC pipes. So we might really need some help being creative here.
And, and so if we expect this building to go another 50 and more years, we have to take care of that. I mean, it really boils down to something as simple as that. And, and to ignore that would be irresponsible of the board and ultimately irresponsible of, of the taxpayers to ignore the fact that the building needs repairs, needs upkeep. And in this project, this does not want to be responsible. We are the, we don't own the building. We are the stewards of the building temporarily. And we would encourage the community to get involved in the planning process, air their concerns and, and help us move forward with what we would describe ultimately as a responsible package for a capital project.
And so thank you, Mike and Nick, for the last project. Especially Nick for costing it right. This, it's always difficult to do because you're projecting out how many years? Four? Four years. Because we passed that referendum in December of 15. And Mike, for your creativity in so, so many ways. So thank you both for the last project and what you're doing to help us in this one.
Okay, thank you. At this point during the meeting, members of the Board of Education may request to have any items removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We don't have to vote on that, right? Now I'm trying to get down to the next one. Thank you. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Okay, this is the time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at future meetings. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit. It's your time, anybody? Oh, yay.
Hi, I'm Lainey Overhoff. I'm the vice president.
I'm the vice president of the senior class. On behalf of the student council, we want to apologize for missing last meeting. And I'm just going to briefly talk about the activities that we put on leading up to Christmas break and touch upon the winter sports this season. So we had each day designated, like we had an ugly sweater day and we had a whiteout day. And then students had the opportunity to sign up for an activity on Friday. And some of those activities were volleyball. They could decorate Christmas cookies and gingerbread. They could watch different movies. There was board games and crafts. And there was also a locker decorating contest. As far as winter sports go, um, this year we kind of wanted to promote the unified sports more and get the school more involved. And some of the ideas that we had were to have some of the games designated for like a whiteout where other students could come and just get more involved in that program. And for the upcoming years, for homecoming week, we can maybe have something designated, like the designated day for that, or even have during like the pep rally, just kind of, um, uh, just have something that's for them and recognize them. Thank you.
So before you go, were you part of the Yak Summit too?
Yes.
Do you want to talk about it while you're here?
Uh, sure. So I kind of did talk about it. A lot of it was, was getting the school more involved. So that's where we came up with the ideas, like where we could have that recognized more.
So the Yak Summit brought in close to 130 students from all over, right?
Yep.
Getting our students that have some type of developmental need or special needs involved, being leaders within their own schools. What I learned at the Section Six meeting this morning is out of 48 different, is that Western New York Section Six leads the entire New York State in getting unified sports up and rolling in the past couple of years. And then we have been leaders in it and we're certainly really, really proud of that and proud of our, of all of our students like you who have made sure that basketball and bowling have just taken off.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So thank you for coming tonight.
Of course. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Nice job. Anybody else?
Only that I admit that I was panicked when Mr. Lyons told me he was adding 130 students to the high school, but it went off without a hitch, didn't it? Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're on to the next part. We're putting this one off. That the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Superintendent Sandra Anzalone be accepted effective July 1st, 2020. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Anzalone for her seven years of service to the district.
Um, second.
We can vote against it.
Is there any discussion? I would like to just take a second to thank Sandy for all of her hard work. It is not an easy job being superintendent. I know it looks very glamorous, but it is a 24 hours, seven day a week commitment.
That's actually in my contract. It does. It says 24/7.
Doesn't.
And that explains the 4:30 in the morning text that we get. Exactly. But on capital improvement project, just, there's been a ton of great changes to the district and.
It hasn't gone unnoticed. We will miss you.
And I actually, I want to say was kind of coerced into running for this board three years ago. I was like, oh, you know, I don't know, but I'm glad I did. And the very first time I met Sandy was, I'm not from this district, but my sisters and her husband and kids have been raised here, went to school here, and now they're adulting. And my youngest niece was on the, when she was junior, she was on the softball team and they won the state championship up in Glen Falls. And we left there, pulled into town at about one o'clock in the morning. And thanks to Sandy and a few other, Paul Shepherd, a few other key people from the board, there was a bonfire in the back here and like town people lined the street. And I coached at East Aurora for 29 years with multiple swimming state champions and never once were we ever recognized for it. And I'm like, holy cow, this is like the real deal out here. And I appreciate all that I've learned from you by being on the board. And I hope my sense of humor and sarcasm wasn't too much for you.
But I, I think that's what made Sandy special because I worked for a lot of superintendents and I don't remember superintendents being so involved in the district, in coming to concerts and coming to games and just showing yourself and being part of our community. So we're glad you became part of our community. Thank you.
And there'll be plenty of time to say nice things over the next few months, but I would also like to thank Sandy for her vision. It's, it's fine to say, to look at something and say that's the way it is, but when Sandy came in was similar to the time where I got involved with a lot of things and we looked at what it could be. And she had a vision for this is where we go. And that's a special quality and it's been a blast and six more months, so you're not done yet.
Yeah.
So, so can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So Sandy, I'd like to thank you for your vision because without that, I would not be able to be basically zooming in to attend this meeting, so.
That first time was pretty hard, wasn't it?
No, no, it wasn't that hard.
Lucinda remembers. Do you remember that, Lucinda, where there was like a two-minute delay? Yeah, look at her.
No, but where you've put this district technology wise, along with you too, Lucinda, you know, want to thank you for that.
So thank you all. I think it's, it's no surprise that you can't do alone. I stare at Lucinda, who was relentless about you cannot have a capital project and talk about it without me in the room, right? To a board of education that let me have a vision to say, we need to step it up. We need to get back in the 21st century. And to the staff and the students in this district who believe that they're just as good as any North Town district that can be, and we break records and we become top 10 in math or science. So thank you for your kind words, but it's certainly not done alone.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Congratulations. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of elementary teacher Kim Castiglione be accepted effective July 1st, 2020. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Castiglione for her 27 years of service to the district.
Second. Any discussion?
This one's a big loss to GLP. She has definitely been the face of kindergarten along with a few others, but still be missed.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of librarian Sandra Potts be accepted effective July 1st, 2020. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Potts for her 23 years of service to the district.
Second. Excuse me. Any discussion?
Yep, so Sandy is one of those rare teachers that came in and knew things outside of her own area. She certainly also was instrumental in becoming what we consider to be the title of a library media specialist, not the old time title of a librarian. And so we certainly do thank her. She's been around the district too, from what I can understand before my time. Ellen, help me here. She was at GLP for a while too.
Right.
And elementary school.
She started at GLP and came to this building.
Mrs. Potts, and I know she's not here, has the sweetest, well, she's got a very sweet temperament and disposition with the kids, but when the kids graduate from fifth to sixth grade or sixth to seventh grade in the past, she would send them cards, like individualized notes. And I just thought it was the sweetest thing for a teacher. I mean, she sees all of the kids and the entire cohort and it's really sweet. So she will be missed and hard to replace for sure. Anyone else?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Okay, well, we don't need the guidelines for appointments. Can we go to the next part? Yeah, thank you. Um, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Mary Maxon, who is permanently certified in special education and pre-K 6 elementary education and professionally certified as a school building leader and school district leader, is hereby appointed on probation as a director of people personnel in the administration tenure area commencing on March 2nd, 2020 and ending on March 1st, 2024.
Second. Any discussion?
She has a smart husband who's here tonight. So this is Derek. We've had a number of conversations and I always want to thank the spouse because coming into education, no matter what level you're at, is a really big commitment for you. But also this was an extensive, extensive search, incredibly emotional for all of us in the district, not just because of Sean's retirement, but because, and even, and even as Brandy was saying, is because we absolutely care about all of our students and our students with special needs as well. So, thank you.
Okay, salary is prorated at 97,600 annually for 2019, 2020, and will remain at that level from 2020 through 2021.
Any discussion? Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Okay. Just tell me what to do. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Donna Bender, be appointed on probation as a senior clerk typist effective January 31st, 2020 and ending July 30th, 2020. Salary is based upon CSEA contract, level five, step three.
Second. Any discussion?
Oh, yes. This one has been a long, long coming. Look at Lucinda in the back. Lucinda has worked since before I came in 2013 with a halftime secretary at best. We decided a long time ago that one of our goals was to try to bring back the support staff that existed in this district prior to 2011 cuts. And it's taken us this long, nine years to get back to where we were before that. Certainly the needs are even bigger. This is also an upgrade from a clerk typist to a senior clerk typist because I keep telling Lucinda she has to stop doing some things that are, certainly should be delegated to someone else. So this is a full-time position at a senior clerk typist level. I met Donna last week and she's absolutely perfect for Lucinda's team. And so I'm happy to recommend her.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Brian Rowland, be appointed on probation as a bus mechanic foreman, effective approximately January 31st, 2020 and ending approximately July 30th, 2020. Salary is based upon CSEA contract, level 13, step nine.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, I fell asleep. No, I really do. This, we posted this position three times. And so I also want to thank Donnie Priceill for filling in, I believe, since November. Am I right? Since November. And also Mary Banco, since this person works for Mary in the transportation department. But all in all, it just goes to show you how important our CSEA employees are to the district. This is our support staff and that we have to have them and we have to replace them. And so I also want to thank CSEA for working outside the contract with an MOA to enable us to hire this person at a step nine.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Gregory Erickson, be appointed on probation as a bus driver, effective January 16th, 2020 and ending July 15th, 2020. Salary is based upon CSEA contract, level nine, step three.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say we have been short all year, one bus driver for run. So Mary Banco and our new head bus driver, Cindy Casper, have been working diligently, trying to get their, getting their work done, not trying, but actually getting their work done, handling the bus runs. We've had multiple people out sick recently with the flu that's gone around. And so when this morning Mary called and said, I got him to accept, I got the candidate to accept and he's ready to walk onto a bus tomorrow, we were excited for him. We made it happen and we are so thrilled that he will be coming to our district. He comes with experience. And so this is a wonderful opportunity and it's a great day for the Eden Bus Garage.
Yay.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
This is a report. I don't have much. It's budget season and I figure everyone's sick of hearing about me talking, but in the spirit of budget season, the New York State Comptroller released the allowable levy growth factor, which is the CPI index for the year, to be used for the 2021 tax cap calculation at 1.81. So when this first came out, it was a 2% tax cap, while 2% this year is 1.81 and is part of a multi-step formula that makes it impossible for the average person to even keep up with, where did that number come from? The other factor that comes in is a tax-based growth factor, which is .0058. I see I missed a couple zeros when I typed it. So that's the new assessed growth in the district. So both of those will become part of the tax cap calculation, which will be coming out and is due to New York State by March 1st. So that'll be part of those revenues we talk about in February.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Sure, I'd just like to take a moment to thank David Lowry for coming to our meeting tonight. He's sitting in the front. He is the executive director for Erie County Association of School Boards. We are thrilled to be a member. We apologize that we're not there all the time, but we all run two or three different, as I know you do as well, coming out of the, out of the Yerkois School District. So welcome and thank you for coming. I know that you do this with all the schools that are in your membership. Secondly, I'd like to just let the board know that our two newest administrators, J. Iwanko and Jason Lyons, who both started December 20th, so they came on the day of that party that Brandy was talking about, are doing an absolutely great job. I hear good things about both of them all the time. And I thank you for your support in bringing them to Eden. You also approved Mary Maxon today as our newest administrator and I am now officially done hiring new administrators for this year. We did hire also a middle school, high school nurse, Ashley Garrity, started with us not too long ago as well. I've also heard incredibly great things about Ashley. And if all goes well, she will actually have the ability to design a nurses suite for the middle school and high school that I believe will be really good for our students and give them privacy and confidentiality that they need. And also just to remind everyone here that at the end of this month, Kathy Klopp and Sandy Latkey are retiring. This was an MOU that the board approved with ETA to allow these retirements in the middle of the year. And I know that both of them are excited and ready to go, but as I can say personally to you, that decision to rewrite, to retire is a personal one, is an emotional one. And when you work for a district like Eden, it is certainly not taken lightly. So I wish Sandy and Kathy well in their new adventures as well.
And student report, and I know Lainey already did that for us, so thank you for that. Now board report roundtable. Anybody?
I would just like to make a couple of comments about, I'm sure people have a lot of questions now that Sandy has formally announced her retirement. We did at a special board meeting appoint David O'Rourke. He is the superintendent from Erie Tuboces to assist us in the search. That is at no charge to the school to earn nominal. It'll be charged, any, any expenses he occurs printing stuff for us is what we reimburse him for and that's about it. In the next day or two, we will, as a board, be releasing a letter just to address the public on how the search will look. There are multiple.
There are multiple, multiple meeting dates, and just like with our hiring of administrators, there will be lots of opportunity for community input. Look out beyond the lookout for surveys, both electronically and in paper format, because we will want feedback on, to hear about what everyone else is looking for, for our next superintendent of the district. Am I missing anything?
The survey will be coming quickly, I think, and then...
Tomorrow morning.
And then I think it's open until the end of this month, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So Barb, can you just tell everyone where you're putting that?
It'll be on the website, on the homepage under headlines. There's a letter with a link in it to the survey.
Okay, and maybe we can also blast that out on social media? Okay. Okay, well...
We'll have hard copies.
Yes, and there will be paper copies available as well for those people who don't have access to the internet. And I think that's it for me. There is a legislative breakfast coming up at the, through the Erie County Association of School Boards. I will be attending, that's on January 25, at the Frontier High School. That's for the, like, the South Towns area, there's a different ones for North Towns District, and then there's a dessert forum coming up on February 6 with Dr. Rick Timms, who is always a wealth of knowledge regarding just state financing, school district financing, and you usually leave his meetings with your head spinning, but it is interesting and worthwhile to go. So I will, my intent is to attend both of those.
Okay. And future dates, should I read all those?
No.
There's future dates. They're coming up, many dates.
Yep, and those are also on Facebook. Some of them are in our hard copy calendar, and they are also up on our website.
It's budget season, I monopolize everything.
I would say, though, that in the spirit of playing nice, we will not be monopolizing this space for some of those special board meetings, so that the musical here can set up and not have to unset up. And so Mrs. Felder and I had some good conversation about how we could both work this out for the best interest of everyone. So pay attention, because it might not be here.
Okay, good. All right, so...
No executive session, though.
No executive session, so now we can adjourn the meeting? Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Any discussion?
Just watch the weather tomorrow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.